...five thirty-four. Suzie, can you call consul, please?
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salaswede?
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Here.
And Mayor Dohore?
I'm here.
May I, would you please call consul or roll call for the real time?
Commissioner Bradmire?
Here.
Commissioner Cadwalder?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Commissioner Plank?
I'm here.
Commissioner Schraven?
Here.
Commissioner Alice is absent. And Chair Barker?
Here.
All right, motion to approve the agenda for the committee of the whole year.
I'll take that motion.
On the board? Any discussion, anybody need to change anything? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Salaswede?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Mayor Dohore?
Yes.
Citizen counter, item on the agenda. All right, we'll move to item four, regulation of recreational marijuana.
I'll turn this over to the city attorney in a second. Basically, we're at the, kind of, the starting point. Obviously, now we agree that we're going to opt in for recreational marijuana. And we're kind of at the point where we can reiterate what we can and cannot do, what the law allows, doesn't allow. Not that we have to have decisions tonight, but we need to start thinking at some point, some zoning requirements. Areas where we want to allow facilities, common facilities we want to allow. A lot of these things will need to be in place, obviously, with what people can open. There's a whole, there's a whole number of issues that we're coming up, we're getting a lot of calls, Steve and I. Sorry. Sorry. I just figured you'd get a lot of calls. Sorry.
Yeah, I get a lot of calls. We're getting a lot of calls from different real estate people. They want to kind of, even during this discussion, they want to share what you see some areas they're thinking, see what towns and folks can think, what his thoughts are on those locations. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we're going to have to look into.
I'm going to turn this over to Dick, we can start by basically going over the ladder that you sent you.
Thank you. I'm not going to turn it over to Jessica in a moment, but let me just make a couple of comments along those.
This letter went to us and to her.
That's correct. You're actually, in the, in the text of the material, there's a memorandum from us. And then there's also a memorandum from Andy. Even though Andy and I did not compare notes, the memorandums are remarkably similar. It came as a simple, same conclusion. Just to emphasize what Mike just mentioned, and that is, you don't have to make any decisions tonight, it isn't expected that you would make any decisions tonight. You have a fair amount of time to do that, as you, I think, all know. Lara, the state agency, has a year from, from last November, a couple of their own rules and regulations. Many of which will have an impact on your community, since you haven't opted out. So, there is a lot of unknown, as we go through this, quite honestly. If you think of this in terms of laws or regulations, you might want to think of it in two categories. One is zoning regulations, and there's a whole variety of zoning considerations that you may want to make. And then think in terms of regulatory requirements that may not have anything to do with zoning, or may touch on zoning, but not have anything directly to do with zoning. So, and, and they do intersect with.
So you could do both.
Yeah. And, and you could do both. I think Jessica, communities are doing both, right?
Yes.
Communities are doing both. There's some regulatory requirements that you may want to consider immediately. And we'll get into that, Jessica will get into that. One is this prohibition that is referenced in the act that was approved, that says that you can't use, or it's improperly illegal to use, within a public place. But we have the ordinance that says that at this point, so essentially, we think it's a good idea to adopt the ordinance, probably sooner rather than later, if that's your inclination, is to prevent the use within a public place, to adopt that ordinance. An attempt to define what you mean as public places. There can be a variety of things. What comes to mind immediately is a park, public streets, this building, for example, is a, is a public place. So think of it in those two groupings, zoning restrictions and regulations, and then regulations, separate regulations, that are not exclusively zoning.
You mean just mirror the state statute, then change the where? You know what I mean?
I'll let you answer, Jessica.
Okay. I'm not quite sure I know what you mean.
Well, the state prohibits it, right?
Well, the state says things, certain things are not authorized. It's this horrible statute, right, of saying what's not authorized, and what's not, one of many things to not authorize is the use in public places. It does not define the public place, and therefore, that is the topic of much discussion, and I was talking to Andy. But others is the worst legislation, it's very difficult to understand because of holes in it. But one big hole is that it did not define a public place. So, as Dick suggests, it might be a good idea to get out ahead of that and determine what use in public places we'll get started.
Would you also then consider other drugs or alcohol in that same ordinance to eliminate that in that same public use?
Is it already?
If it's not already there, I don't know if it's already there or not.
There is already an ordinance for alcohol that really prohibits the use of alcohol. And there's some exceptions to that. For example, there is a way where someone can rent out a portion of a park and have alcohol there. But there's a process, I think, you have to go through to do that.
Maybe like what we do at concerts?
That's one example. Okay.
So we would need to make something similar to that, right? And then just exclude the part that says you can get a permit for it?
Yeah, if you want to do that, you could exclude it exclusively, or you could provide, I suppose, with a special use permit if you want to.
To add on marijuana to the existing ordinance?
I was just going to say, there might be a way to incorporate.
Yeah, just add it up. Amended, essentially, just amended.
Right, just to get out in front of that.
And then you can go from there.
But that one, how old is that one? I mean, that's got to be. Yeah. So maybe we should look at that one, because there may be a change in how it's a public place that we didn't have then.
We're certainly keeping our eye out for any law that even, sort of, by analogy, might help shed some light on what they meant. But to this point, we do recommend that you adopt both a regulatory and a zoning ordinance. And you'll see different communities, and it is differently, but we think this is a good idea, because zoning ordinances are required to undergo certain procedures. And it's important that you keep zoning issues in zoning ordinance, and make sure they've gone through that public hearing and so forth. And then regulatory or police issues in your regulatory ordinance. And because they're separate procedures, they're less subject to challenge, if you do the follow the right procedure for both. In the regulatory ordinance, you would perhaps issue licenses, like your annual local license for these types of facilities. I'm assuming you would want inspections done to properties. And then you would have an easier way to revoke a license, if it turns out that they're not complying with your ordinance. It's much harder to revoke a license under a zoning ordinance. So, it gives you some flexibility in terms of just keeping on top of these, it's in the regulatory place of success. Then zoning ordinance, that's where you start to get into location and, and Andy talks about the detail, is, you know, the zoning issues. So for that reason, we recommend that you go about this in a parallel way. But as Dick said, maybe get out in front of it in terms of defining public places right, right off the bat, because that is such a gaping hole in legislation. So just to turn to the memo that was distributed from, there are certain things that the state just said that you're allowed to regulate, and certain things that you can't. And we sort of boiled it down to this, based on the language, which isn't, as I mentioned. You can either opt out altogether, which it sounds like you're not going to do, and if that means you do nothing, these are going to come at you. So it's the opposite of the medical marijuana context, where you had to opt in or do something affirmatively. If you sit back and do nothing, you're going to start getting your applications, unless you opt out. You can limit the number of establishments that you have within your municipality, and provide limits on the number of establishments.
You're going to have to do a lot of these to meet, right?
Well, that's a subject of debate, and we, we, that's the conservative approach, it's not entirely clear, but, but, I mean, that's the wise conservative thing to do, would be to allow one type. It's not entirely clear from the language, and Andy and I were talking about this, and that'll have to play out probably in litigation.
How many different types are there?
Six. Yep, and actually, that is really spelled out really well on Andy's. Yep.
I remember seeing a lot of them.
Growers, micro businesses, retailers, processors, safety compliance facilities, security quarters, and establishments.
Even allowing it in zoning, and just the amount of available space that is going to limit.
Naturally.
Some of the larger, like.
We were talking about that, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe limiting is, maybe, this is a good place for you to start. Maybe limiting is, is not as crucial when you decide where you're going to put this, because where you're going to allow this to be will in fact be limiting. You know what I'm talking about?
But you could have one place that has all six.
You could, yeah.
There are some properties that we're getting calls on right now, that could, that could actually fall under the production category.
Well, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying you're not going to have fifteen of them, because we don't have rooms of fifteen.
No.
You're not going to have fifteen little storefronts that you like. Once all the eliminated space is eliminated, it's going to.
We're getting a lot of calls on my, there's a lot of property, what I'm saying is, there are a number of, I mean, you could do it a couple of different ways. You could, I think it's going to be, obviously, it's going to, could be challenged, but you could take a position that we're only going to allow one of each type of business. You could allow, you could do that. Or, I mean, or you say, okay, we're going to allow X amount, it's first come, first served.
Well, and that, that actually is due, that's a great segue to number two under, on the memo about the competitive process, because Lara is not going to limit the number. They, they already said that we're hands off about that. Every applicant we get who satisfies the requirements we have, we're going to say, okay, and then it's up to you, local government, to limit it and to come up with a competitive process to decide which one is most suitable to operate in your community, and that's tough.
Do you want to, because Lara gets paid either way.
So, so you are, you might be faced with a situation where you do have to come up with a selection process, to your point, and that's tricky, and I've actually gone through that once with Miss Palade, and so that's something that's been.
I'm understanding Grand Rapids is doing it, with the medic, on the medical.
Right, and that's the one that I worked on, actually.
Okay.
And, and there's, a lot of thought went into that process. And the things you have to consider is, are we going to do this first come, first served? Where there's literally, you have a line of applicants waiting camping outside your door, that has happened. Do you want to put all the names in the hat and do a lottery situation? Or do you want to combine methods and do sort of both? Do you want to have a checklist where if they meet certain requirements, then they get points, for lack of a better term? And then that moves them ahead in the selection process for the processing application? So there's a number of different ways to do this. The lottery approach has been sort of upheld so far as the most objective. No matter what you do, you have to come up with an objective criteria, criteria, criteria for evaluating these, because there's a lot of money at stake.
Because lottery seems like the most risky, the worst of the three applicants, and then they fail in a year, you're going to have to go through the process again.
But even to get your cat into, your name into the lottery, you have qualifications, yep.
Can you limit, like, in other words, like, have a limit of twelve? And limit a minimum of two in each category, can you do it that way? Or, so you could do it that way.
You can allow the flexibility with numbers.
And also, can you say minimum of six, maximum of fifteen, so?
Yep.
So that way, if you have six, you can lock those in as, you can say you've got.
Great. Well, minimum number would be hard to do, because you're going to not get that number of applicants. You can play with the numbers all that you want, these are the language instead.
Is there a way to pull the selection process, like, they bring up, and I know in Arbor, they won, Kalamazoo, they won, and like, pick it apart and make a hybrid? Instead of starting from zero, and then two years down the road, finding out all these places have better processes? Or we just pull three big ones, cut it four big?
You're at the cutting edge, knowing as early as you're adapting.
Well, they'll have them known for medical.
Well, Grand Rapids has it figured out for medical, and a lot of it will translate to, yeah.
I mean, it can hurt to look at it.
Right, what somebody else do you want?
You might get one idea out of it, you're one idea ahead of where you were.
Are they that similar?
Um, in terms of the competitive process, yeah.
Okay.
I think a lot of it will translate. Yeah.
Law wise.
Law, right. I mean, some of the terms are not consistent, and those would need to be tweaked and so forth, but if you've done a really thoughtful job composing your medical marijuana scheme, which I know you look happier, right? A lot of that is going to translate.
Sounds like they've already been through litigation, and they've already had it departed. Maybe you can see also what does, like, what are we going to do after, you know what I mean?
So, just going to these six types of businesses, something we're seeing that does certain, something that kind of came out of this, something that the police chief and I saw was what's going on in the city of the nominee. There's a, and I think you're even seeing this too in, in Kalamazoo. There is a person on the, on Facebook, he's advertising his house as a marijuana club. So you pay like fifteen dollars, and you come there and you smoke marijuana in a residential neighborhood, and he's obviously profiting off this. And I think, you know, he might even be giving away the marijuana in his house. That I don't know.
Well, you have to, right, because you can't.
Can't sell it.
You can't sell it.
Unless you're a business.
I can sell you.
If you're bringing your own.
Or if you're bringing your own. But he's making a, that business model technically didn't fall under the six.
But if it's zoned residential, he's right off the bat, he's running a zoning district. Is he running a commercial business in residential?
There are a number of ways to attack this scenario, and we keep hearing about these concerns, because everyone's going to try this stuff, right? But what you're describing involves disguised sales, really, and so that's how it's going to have to be challenged. And we do anticipate that coming down the future or whatever.
Yeah, I've heard on the radio.
But, but it's a disguised sale, even some of you might recall, I know there were salons that used to go to alcohol, for example, as part of.
Yeah, there's a bit of it, I got my.
So, yeah, no, that was nice, but.
Some attorney came to run it then.
So, we do want to just make that, that there are a number of ways that you could attack that, I mean, that's going to be circumvented, statue.
Yeah, because I mean, the, the, I mean, if somebody wants to allow people to come over to his house, smoke marijuana, I guess that, that, another law that you can't. But when they're profiting as a business in a residential area, that, I, I mean, I just, you know, and then you're seeing these, then you have the whole other issue of, okay, these people are coming there, they're smoking marijuana, now they're getting a car and driving. It's not like, I mean, technically, the way, the way the statutes are for OUID, it's, it's not like I can go to a bar, have a beer, go home, and still be under the limit, the way the, the way the, the OUID statutes are. They're, if there's any sense or any indication you're under the influence, you're in violation.
Well, and you're, you're just pointing out one of so many flaws within the statute, right? It's almost like it was written just completely out of context. Where did this marijuana come from that he was serving at his house? And is it zoned property, is he selling it or transferring it, and then, right, it's still going to be in your system when you operate your vehicle to go home? So, yeah.
Or business law.
Well, I think the example of Kalamazoo is a brewery, actually.
Yeah.
It's a commercial operation.
But he's, he's, it's commercial, and he's closing it down for the night, and inviting people in, and it's a private law at that point.
Right, and that's, yeah, we just don't know what public places means yet.
That seems pretty legal, frankly. I mean, he's closing it down, you have to want to go in there, you have to, you know, jump the law. Again, one of the other things is, you know, you can't smoke.
That's what it was just going to add, is.
Right.
It's going to fall under.
Got to go outside and.
So you can't, you can't smoke outside.
Yeah.
Well, some people are going to amend their clean air ordinances to incorporate no smoking in marijuana. So you can do something with the smoking aspect, and I don't think you can do anything with the edible aspect. And, and in your scenario, he must be profiting somehow, or he's not.
Sure, selling beer, bunches.
And just allowing them, you know, it's.
Well, he also doesn't need charge for that.
Yeah, that's part of the law, it's part of the law, right?
And that'll end up in court, there's no doubt about it.
Oh, somebody, yeah, yeah. But it creates an enforceable nightmare, doesn't it? From your end, trying to figure out what's, sure it does, sure it does. That's the nicest.
Are there any criteria at this point, if someone's at a marijuana paraphernalia shop, and they come out of there and get in the car and go driving and get stopped?
Paraphernalia by itself is not a crime. They have to have, at the Supreme Court cases, People versus Stevel, they have to have active THC in their system, and you have to prove there's under the influence at the time of the traffic stop. If you don't have both of those, you have no crime. So metabolites only, which would be the T, C, O, O, H, that's not a studyable drug, that's metabolized, that, that doesn't count. But it has to be one nanogram or more of THC in the system, plus under the influence at the time of the stop.
Is there anything on the market, or in the market, anybody talking about, at least test for that?
Yes, Kent County was actually a test site for one of the mouth swaps, and I do, I probably will see that in the near future going statewide. We're going to open it up to a couple more counties. Again, that's open to testing and litigation, and whether or not it's accurate or not, but it seemed to be 30% or better accurate, so. I do see that coming.
You know, one of the ways to start this process, with Andy, he pulled his map out, to begin to have some discussion over where, where you might permission these actions.
So, yeah, maybe, I don't know, there's a map. And so what we've done, just to kind of make it a little bit easier to read, is in the, kind of like brown area, where we have districts going for residential or public use. That shows all of your residential zoning districts, so suburban residential are one, or two, or three, manufactured home. And she also has a, a public facilities district, which, like this property, City Hall, for example, is public facilities, some of your churches, parks, et cetera, schools are all public facilities. So those are all colored in, it's gray here, we're considered, those are essentially out of the running, if you will, for a viable place to, to want to use. So what's left are kind of the districts where absent of any other control, where one could go, which leaves us with C two and C three. C two is the downtown, C three is a general business district, primarily on the west end of Towne, on Main Street, that's kind of your typical strip, highway commercial development district, mixed use. There's only a handful of properties, most of them are just a little bit east of here, along Main Street, again, kind of a downtown, downtown style building. Light industrial and industrials, but would also be viable under the act. And then there's this Rivers Edge District, which we approved, or the planning commission approved a couple of years ago. Those are shown as being viable locations here for, because they're not zoned exclusively for residential use, but for all intents and purposes, they're not viable locations, because those are within the floodway, that are always underwater, as you guys know. So I don't really consider those to be viable locations from a planning perspective, because there's a good chance you're going to be underwater over there.
Could those be used for growing?
Possibly, but, you know, I don't know enough about the growing component to it, I mean, I think, I don't know if you can do it outside, if that's even.
And George would have to be inside.
Yeah, George would have to be inside.
Andy, what, what's the cloud, the clouds?
Yep, so that's, that's, the next thing I'm going to show you is, so there's these black kind of clouds, if you will, on, on here. And the act requires that marijuana establishment can't be within a thousand feet of school. So clouds here are centered around various school properties within the city, although we do have to amend that to include the two preschools. Yep, St. Mary's, and then also over.
Actually, we don't. We, we, I found another, I found a section we were talking about, where you cannot use at a preschool, or a kindergarten, or a case hall. But when it comes to the thousand foot component, it does not match a preschool.
Oh, okay.
That could be something, but you could regulate and consider.
So, limit that, yeah, so.
Does that eliminate, I'm sorry, Andy, does that eliminate the other one? Because doesn't that church down here only have a preschool?
Well, St. Mary's was just purchased by Bolon Area Schools, and they're going to be moving their preschool in the.
But this one only has a preschool, right?
Correct, right.
So is that now not, can we not use them?
So, based on that, then.
You would have to change.
Well, I would like to see it as any.
Yeah, so, under the act, as it was adopted, what's kind of left, so anything that's either this gray, the light gray, or the pink on the map, that's not in this hashed area, is where one could conceivably go and at least be compliant with the restrictions of the act.
How far down is this coming?
Um. So this is, well, this is Bozo here, so basically, it's your.
Center Street?
Uh, Center Street is right.
Yeah, but if you're looking here.
So, if you take St. Mary's, or it takes in Center Street, then.
Yeah, but, but that's, that's just going to be a preschool, though, that's not going to.
Yeah, but I don't.
Well, we could, we could.
Yeah, you can legislate that, you can legislate churches if you were.
It doesn't have to be a thousand feet either.
You can make it less, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the next part of this, and I think a big part of, of the discussion from a zoning perspective, and it'll be given, the locations that are left on that map, I mean, that gives quite a bit of, I mean, actually, more than I thought, quite a bit of land in the city where one could conceivably go. So there's a couple of areas to the east of the downtown, with a couple of areas, you know, right near downtown, and all that C three on the, on the west side of the city, and those industrial properties. And those are all viable locations under the act where we can, where one could go. Now, if the city was so inclined, you can, you can narrow that down some, so similar to what a lot of communities do with adult businesses, for example, you say that you can't be within 300 feet of a residential district, you can't be within 500 feet of a school. So when you do that, and you apply those isolation radius, the, like, the number of viable locations gets a little bit smaller. So a good thing to do, I think, and maybe a way to sort of begin the conversation with, with you all, is, is instead of kind of picking the spots where you think it makes sense on the map, is maybe talk about what you want to control, and what you want to regulate, and what those outcomes should be. And then from there, we can decide and figure out what makes sense. So if it makes sense to the city to say, not be within a certain distance of residentially zoned property, or of a school, or of a church, we can add those to the map, generate a new map, and then you can look at sort of what's left.
I think, yeah, be careful, because you don't want to be hypocritical and say, you know, we're going to allow it.
Right.
And then eliminate every, if you did 500 feet in a residential district, you might build a cloud.
Yeah, so.
Circle up the whole city, and then at that point, what was the point of it?
Well, into that point, you kind of have to interject.
Yeah.
So the standard that you have to keep in mind is that the requirements that you impose must not be unreasonably impractical. Which, you know, what does that mean? Well, they went on to say that the measures necessary to comply with the rules or ordinances adopted pursuant to the act, subject licensees to unreasonable risk, or require such a high investment of money, time, or other resource or asset, that a reasonably prudent business person would not operate the marijuana establishment.
Well, you have to be a little bit careful, too, I think, in that it becomes a self fulfilling prophecy, right? That you assume they're going to be sort of sketchy vice industry like shop, and if you push them all the way up to where it's just where a vice industry type shop would do it, then you just inherit, you know.
Same for what you got.
Yeah, I don't want them to mess this building in town, that's some kind of great palace, but you don't want it to be just like, you don't want dive strips, sort of strip from any town.
You want me to pull up the access code here? Because if you include the St. Mary's property, I can show you how far that's.
I don't, I would like to see preschool, I don't know about the residential district, I don't know about all that stuff, but I would like to see preschools included in that.
Yeah, so if you, if you include preschools in that, you basically eliminate. Yeah, so if you, if you include preschools in that, you basically eliminate everything east of Center Street for all practical purposes, maybe trouble.
Yeah, because. So I drive right to school, Center Street is right there.
Yeah, yep.
Obviously, if you go to.
I wanna throw one, I wanna throw one other thing in here.
That was a foot push of these two bubbles.
Yes, yes.
I wanna throw one other thing in. So, one of the calls we've been getting about property inquiries, and because our initial consensus, the, you know, the kind of intern conversations is we wanted to, we wanted, a lot of areas, it's already restricted out of the downtown because of this proximity to, to run some in. But there's parts of the downtown that we didn't, we, that technically are, are legal, but in my conversations, it's not sure if we wanna just totally restrict the entire downtown. And then, then the next question is, where do we want downtown to end? Because when you get to the cor- when you get to the intersection of Main and Hudson, it gets kind of, it gets questionable as to like, actually where, where you can say downtown technically ends. And at the corner of Main, we have been acquired, we have had property inquiries, two areas that I, 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 I wanna at least run by you to see if this is okay for you. But the first one would be the silos surrounding New Union. We've got calls on that, to see whether or not that's an area that would be eligible. And as of right now, I tell them, I tell them that from my, from my initial calculations, it was a thousand, it would be at a thousand feet from, from St. Mary's.
But does that, is it?
I believe it is.
Steve, do you have a?
I'm doing it right now.
If you're not including preschools, that would very likely be.
Oh, a thousand feet, right.
But if you are including.
If you are.
That's what Steve's doing right now.
Right, so you're right at, you're right at that thousand foot. Actually, no, you're, no, no, that's, you're, you're, you're too far. That's.
Well, I'm showing you that it is far enough that.
Oh, okay. You're at a thousand, okay, so you're.
You're at a thousand plus, you're at a thousand.
The same people that own the brewery.
Because you'd be about 900 from where, from where.
That's what I'm saying.
If you point, if you take the corner of that, you're about 900 feet from, from the silos.
Well, actually, it looks like the property line.
So you'd have to go to the front of the property line. So here's 794. So the question is, would you, would you be, you know, would you be supportive of that area? The other, the other one that in this area that we've been getting calls on is the.
Mason's.
Correct, southeast corner of Lincoln Lake and Chatham, which technically is owned, it's a secret, but abuts a residential subdivision.
Lincoln, Lincoln, Chatham?
Correct.
Yeah, the old Mason's building.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We've got calls on that, and I, I would, I don't, you know, I, I'm throwing this out there, because I'm getting calls on this.
Mike, you can't, I mean, you can't, if, if it's less than a thousand feet from the school.
That's a preschool.
That's a preschool.
Right, the preschool.
But I would, I'd not tell me or.
It's not a thousand feet from Bushnell.
My opinion.
It's not a thousand, it's beyond a thousand feet.
Is it from Bushnell, is it okay?
Yeah, but not from St. Mary's.
Not from St. Mary's.
Right, not from St. Mary's, but St. Mary's will only be a preschool.
But is there a high school?
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, but if we were to include preschools, you're still at 134 feet from Bushnell.
Not only there, it's a preschool this year.
But then it would happen if you were. Then their grandfather in.
Well, it's a state where it's.
They are viable, but it'll be a preschool, it won't be a kindergarten.
And it will, yeah, any business, yeah.
Any licensed.
You can, you can legislate anything you want, but these are just.
All I'm getting.
I'll be clarifying.
My point is if we can set it up any way we want, if somebody's interested in that property, but not having a retail facility there. I mean, you know what I'm saying? If they were just growing and everything looked like it looks now, they would have to be a lot of business.
See, the question is though, whether we've restricted to one of the six.
Oh, I don't think you can restrict, you can dictate what business goes.
That's the problem. I mean, say you can, but it's not.
So like, when Grand Rapids did theirs, they talked about possibly making hybrid out from there. Obviously, they've already gone through this process.
Well, where they are in the process is that it's, they actually imposed a moratorium on medical, so they could. They're still dealing with medical. And I think, I'm not sure when their moratorium, but they haven't actually issued it until now, yeah.
But some of the stuff they're currently working on does.
Absolutely, and absolutely you can take that model and look at all the thought process they've already gone through and the rationale. Yep, absolutely. They made a more of a checklist, actually, that they devised, and what happened is, um, the long process, but an applicant fills out a checklist and checks the boxes of things they're willing to do, essentially, whether it's energy efficiency, or all sorts of different things. This is important to see whether they're a local resident, and they were still debating this a few weeks ago, so this could land differently. But these are the things they were considering, local preferences, those types of things. They check the boxes and get a certain number of points. And then at that point, a man goes into a head, there's a lottery drawing, and then they go through a special land use process for zone. So it's, that's the hybrid that comes together.
Would it, some of us to look at Ann Arbor is Grand Rapids. I mean, there's been medical facilities in Ann Arbor since they got legalized.
I mean, you could certainly look at.
Rather than one that's sort of still up in the air, what about looking at one that's been in place?
And they've gone through the problems, so they can tell you how to avoid, yeah.
Yep, yep.
I don't wanna make it unreasonable by any means, and the people voted for it as well, the majority of them on it, but I don't. Go ahead, Adam.
If you, if you include preschools, you're pretty much opening it up to every property west of Southwest Street, all kinds of stuff. And you're eliminating just about everything in the downtown area.
Is there anybody who does not want to eliminate preschool, or we all, all, everybody wants preschools down there?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the thousand feet.
Twenty thousand feet eliminates a lot of stuff.
Exactly, 500, maybe more, something. I don't know, I don't know, I make the decision, but, yeah.
Well, how much flexibility do you have with issues of these, you know, edges are always gonna be a problem, right? So if you're on the edge of a commercial zone, and it abuts a residential zone, like, if, if a pot retail shop popped up next to my house, I'd be kind of bummed. You know, so what can you do to?
Kind of where, where my thinking was, if you cut storefront on Main, rather, like, for this issue on Chatham, and like, that one, I'll be honest, that one concerns me, because it indirectly abuts a residential. Where the way our city's set up, you could set up most of these storefronts along Main, and yet maybe their back is to the, to the, to their residential. But the res- the residential, they're not gonna see the signage, they're not gonna, I mean, you're not gonna see the traffic in and out of there, because it's already buffered. Because they already have, you know, because if they're, I'm thinking of, for, for perfect gap, I'm thinking of where the staff benefit and tractor supply. If I live in that subdivision over there, behind that, I'm not gonna see those three over there. But if I live at, but if I live at Amity and Chatham, I'm good, or say I'm at, yeah, from one of those houses right across.
There gotta be a park.
Do you want, do you, I guess the question is, do you want, you know, as a, as a, as a, do you want to, do you want to allow that? You may, you may not, I don't know the answer. But those are things that, to, to, to think about. But if you, my thought is, put it on Main, if, if you, if you allow it to storefronts on Main that are beyond a thousand feet, I think you're fine.
Yeah, they're already put there.
There's already bufferings in place for a lot of those buildings. And plus, I know we've been getting calls on a couple of, just a couple of vacant properties on Main now, that, well, you can require buffering to worry about that.
So, so that would be the thing, would be like.
But if you're a viable business, you are going to know that your best chance for success is to face Main Street. I mean, if you're at Stipley and Church, that's not a busy intersection, you're not doing anything to draw up. If you're a viable business who says, listen, we're trying to get off the ground here, what gives us the best chance for success? Obviously, facing Main Street.
Well, depending on the business too, because think about this. You have a lot of property around Atwood, or, that could tech, I mean, that's technically commercial, that could tech, I mean, you could technically go back there.
So one of the things that, just the points you two are making there that I'm hearing, is that we probably really do wanna make sure that we allow, we don't limit to like, one retail, one whatever. You know, we wanna have some kind of competition, so that the guy that.
We get the best candidate.
Get the best candidate in the shop that's just tucked in the corner, is getting outsold by the one in the, you know, spot. And so you know, there's little creepers out in buffer zones that are cheap properties, they get out, you know, the traffic.
There's also two properties on Bowe's Road, they're large, and I've been getting calls on as well, that they would like to see. And as it sits now, with you doing nothing, those are in play.
There's another new Meyer property down there by Myers, that's huge, track oriented, technically, or.
That's another, that's another area. We haven't got, Miles didn't get calls on that, but, but doesn't mean at all.
Where Bearman Dairy used to be, I know somebody who bought that back in there, but.
You could tell me where that is.
Blue, right there where the summer.
Behind the Ford tractors.
Oh, okay, okay, the, the store.
No building back there?
No.
The old.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have some questions. Number one, the old Atwood place there, I mean, there's an actual physical building there, obviously, it's very big. What happens if they sublet to a marijuana establishment?
They could, if, if.
They could, if they're.
Zoning permitted, zoning permitted to use.
But the applicant, it has to be the one operating.
Operating, that's the, you have to.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying.
That business is in there.
But you could have, you know, if, if, and obviously, there's, I mean, it's, it's next to a cemetery, I mean, you know, it's not.
And that's why all companies have your, both ordinances in place, regulatory, so they have to regulate the pricing. And then zoning, you get to decide whether this is by right, I'm sure Andy was gonna talk about this, or special land use. But I'm assuming you'd want it to be a special land use.
And, and the, the, the follow up question that I have is, out of the six establishments, do we have any idea which one would generate the most money for the city?
Well, I mean, you're looking at two different types of taxes, you're looking at a 10% excise tax and a 6% sales tax, that's not gonna go directly to you though. So we're, I mean, applications, you're allowed to charge up to $5,000 per application annually. Beyond that, I honestly don't count it.
Honestly, what I.
So it's mostly property tax.
Yeah, I, I see you getting your biggest value the way that, I kind of, please, Steve and I talked about this today. And the way I look at it is, okay, say, I mean, technically, the law doesn't, doesn't, doesn't say it this way, but if I'm a medical marijuana, not a recreational marijuana facility, dispensary, what have you, and I sold a million dollars a year, technically, 10% of that profit, of that million dollars, is, is taxed in the excise tax, not including the sales tax. So that's $100,000. Of that $100,000, 15% of that goes to, of that $100,000, 15% of that goes to the local jurisdiction. So in theory, you would technically get $15,000 in an excise tax. However, they haven't written the formula as to how you're gonna get your money.
Isn't the formula, but the formula is based on how many you pay.
The formula is.
So you take that $15,000, and then you take away Grand Rapids and Kalamazoo and Ann Arbor, who have, who have 80 of these on every corner.
No, 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 I took it, well, I did it different, my math is doing it differently than you. I took part, I didn't break that, out of, out of 100, out of that 10% excise tax, 15% goes to the jurisdiction, to the, to the jurisdiction. So.
To all of them.
Throughout the state. Okay, so all of them.
Major by, major to how many you have.
Right, 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 that's the addition.
But remember, before you even get that far, Larry takes out all their administrative costs, plus, for the first two years, the first 20 million goes to run programs to look at veterans issues and veteran suicide.
There's 20 million for that, and then 20 million for schools, right? There's 20. They've made.
Well, there's 40, and then.
Roads to bridges, 200, 200.
Yeah, it's in the percent.
And the states administration of property.
There's been several years before there's any money.
Your, your biggest, your biggest increase is gonna be, which you'll probably see, is there, especially because we're getting calls on some of these properties now, the values of those properties, because now they'll be income generating properties, will be assessed on the income approach, that's where you'll see your, that's where you'll see it is on, on the property tax.
Right, exactly.
They'll come from different directions, we're gonna get some out of the state.
Cool. But my, my point is, is which one out of the six, I mean, has generated any study that done? I mean, to me, I, I would love to see somebody, the transportation place here, because all they're doing is delivering it all over the state, or wherever. You know, there's, there's nothing here, or even growing, because again, they deliver all over the state. So people aren't necessarily coming here to purchase it, you know.
Somebody that's just in the transporting business is gonna wanna be on Main Street. There's a lot of me down at Atwood.
Well, the grow operation is gonna be, yeah, the grow operation is gonna be the biggest land grab. So there's the largest income generating property.
I mean, that, that, to me, those are.
But do you have an order issue?
So you have to address it, you're.
You don't need orders.
One other thing, would there be an order issue with these establishments that then you're in here?
There's some.
There is a lead with this whole discussion, that you'll find.
Is that an issue?
Owner and.
Yeah, some people.
It's, it's.
But those are handled with, with ordinances.
Well, you have to think too, the, these are.
They can be handled in conjunction with your zoning.
That's, that's hard work.
Especially a grow operation is gonna be a huge grab for like, power, which will trickle back.
I was just gonna say.
High end, and the water, which will trickle back down once, but then you also have a capacity issue, you're talking about.
Well, you, yeah, we're working on that, but yeah.
But I'm saying, it's not just like, oh, here's the land, plot, put up your operation, and we'll tax value, you gotta worry about water.
Well, if you're in that sewer, it's probably not a sewer.
You have to run water lines, those are.
We don't have it now. You know, to, to address Mike's issue about the backs of buildings facing up against residential, as was mentioned, you could have an ordinance that approves it within these certain areas. It's a special use permit, and as a condition, you could address this issue of fronting or backing.
Does it fit?
So you, so you don't run into counties.
Your individualized concerns that you just mentioned, those could be addressed as part of that special.
Yeah, but how many of those individual concerns do you throw into an ordinance before somebody says, well, now, you're making it unreasonable for us to operate? You think you gotta pick all the ones you want, right? And then take the X amount of most important ones. It's something, we have to just be fine with the fact that there's gonna be some things that we may control. I don't think it's gonna be, I don't think we're gonna get 50 applications, so I think a lot of these.
Make a ten, a private ten.
I'm sure that we will, but we're not gonna get Grand Rapids and Kalamazoo and Ann Arbor applications, right?
They've limited property.
So that's gonna limit the number of activities.
And you also, these people are gonna be paying for the property, what the people who own the property want them to pay for. So you're gonna have a situation where I have this piece of property, like, oh, the whole township opted out, which ends up to now, can't go in Grand Rapids, because there's not enough room. This is the only place you can go, so now you have landowners saying, well, now, this property is worth.
One point two.
That Jim sells middle money instead, you know what I mean?
That's a lot of money.
Right. So then, it's a whole other thing, we have this whole process, and we give two applicat- or two licenses, whatever, and then they go to buy the property from Jim, and he goes, no, sorry. I know there's only two licenses, so this property is worth, I mean, that's why that impact property didn't sell till impact.